We'll call to order tonight's Fort Mill Town Council meeting, Monday, July 17th. Thank you all for joining us. Just a few housekeeping notes. If you would, please silence, not silence your cell phone so that we can give you our due attention, because every time a phone rings, I think it's mine. Also, we have a good crowd tonight, so if you had intended to speak on any topic, you should have signed in. Do we have anyone signed in to speak? Okay. Thank you. All righty. And my esteemed colleague, Mr. Charlie Boyett, when we get to that time, I will let you know that Charlie spent much time and effort on City Council previously and has been a good servant and loyal resident in Fort Mill. So welcome Charlie to our meeting tonight. Thank you all for being here. And with that, we have called to order. If you would, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation. I believe Ronnie's going to do the invocation for us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fathers, we bow our heads. We thank you for the many blessings of life that you have bestowed upon us. We pray that you give us the wisdom and conduct the town's business tonight, and we give you praise for it all in your holy name. Amen.
Thank you. Council members, you have been provided the meeting minutes for June the 19th. Do we have any changes, corrections, deletions that are to be noted?
Motion to accept.
We have a motion to accept.
Second.
I have a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Thank you. Public comment. Pursuant to Section 2-46 of the Code of Ordinances for the Town of Fort Mill, any resident may appear before council for the purpose of providing public comments on any municipal matter except personnel matters. Those who wish to speak must sign the public comments sheet prior to the start of the meeting. And we do have one, Mr. Charlie Boyett. Charlie, if you'd like to go to the podium, or do you just want to talk to us from where you are? It's your turn.
My turn?
Yes, sir. I'll put you first.
Funny, when an old man gets old, he's off in his way.
Just get wise, that's right.
Mayor Savage and members of the council, I'll say that, I'll say it. I want to thank you, leaving the night every time you come up before the council, somebody having gripe, grilling, and what have you, doing this, doing that. But I want to look at you people and say, thank you very much. And here's what it's all about. Every morning I get up, I call Hardest, and he's on Bank Street. Every morning, I break the law. I cross over the line and get on the yellow, the yellow line to keep them hit, what? Pothole. They were full of them. And so here I go. And I want to tell the police department I broke the law every day to get away from the pothole. Now I don't have to break the law anymore. You people got off of your head, whatever it is, and you fixed them. And I want to thank you and take the opportunity to say, thank you. At least I don't have to break the law. I know it rides so smooth. And I don't have to bust a tire. If you keep that up, you know what? I think we would be doing a great job. And Bank Street's just the start of it. And another thing, I remember when we built this building, we put two together, and we thought we had it all, we had our problems solved. And here comes Caporian Building. The Caporian Building was a building I didn't want to see it torn down. And it had one thing that I always wanted here, a drop through thing to pay your darn bills. We got it now. And thank you very much. With our Caporian Building, you've got the the refnecks, I'm not going to tell you that, over on that side, and you can come over here and meet. And you've got a police department. You start to build a police department, then you're going to know how much it costs. That's the biggest thing in the world, reason why we joined the two together. So I'd like to say, thank you very much. You're doing a good job. And old folks like me can... Darren, don't you call me old man again. I'm going back out of here and going to go off and leave y'all alone. And y'all have a nice day. And I appreciate these people coming and taking part in the city of Fort Mill. We've got a good town. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Thank you, Charlie. I would like to say, before he meanders off, that if it weren't for the hard work of people like Charlie, we wouldn't have the good things that we have in Fort Mill today. We wouldn't have the things to work with to do the good work that we try hard. So I'm grateful for Charlie and all the folks of his generation that have really put the shoulder to the grindstone to make our town what it is. Thank you, Charlie. And we don't hear "thank you" very often, so thank you, Charlie.
Thank you, Charlie.
All right. We do not have any public hearings noted for this evening. We're going to start with a presentation by Dennis Peeper, our town manager for Employee of the Quarter. Dennis?
I'd like to call Matt Kennedy. We started the program, Mayor and Council, for Employee of the Quarter. Matt's our first one.
Yay.
Did talk to his direct supervisor this morning, and Matt's the kind of guy, he's the first one there, and always works hard, does a great job. He's only been here two years, he's already obtained three of his wastewater license certifications. He's got water, working on water distribution, I believe, if you don't already have it. And his supervisor said, we take 10 of them right now.
Wonderful.
Just wanted to say a special thanks, give you a certificate. Thanks for what you do, you're doing a great job, we appreciate it. You've done good work.
Thank you, Matt. Appreciate good employees, and we have many of them. Thank you, Matt. Presentation number one will be the swearing in and oath for the new term for Municipal Judge Kyle Hobbs. I think what we have determined is that as Mr. Hobbs has diligently served for a period in the term, he will not be renewing any particular oath because he's already sworn into that. So if we could have a motion that we would enjoy his service for the next two years, that would be wonderful.
I make a motion to extend the judicial term of Judge Kyle Hobbs for another two years for the Town of Fort Mill?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Would like to thank you. It's been a great two years, and it's with great pride that we invite you to continue the service. So, yeah, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Kyle, if you'd like to come and sign this. I think you've already signed it, I just need to sign it. Well, I think I shall.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you so much. It's our honor. Thank you so much. If you hand that to Virginia, we'll make that official. Thank you so much. Second presentation number two will be on Executive Fire Officer Certification. Chief Chipper Wilkerson is going to join us, or I think I've got paperwork here.
Mayor, while you're walking down, I just want to let everyone know that this is the highest certification you can obtain in the fire service, and we are very proud of Chief Wilkerson for working hard and diligently to obtain that.
Let me tell you, this is the guy that very few people know, and he's been really known, and always there. So, United States Fire Administration, National Fire Academy, in recognition of successful completion of the requisite courses of study and applied research projects, the National Fire Academy under authority granted by the 111th Congress of the United States of America, and on recommendation of the faculty confers the title of Executive Fire Officer upon Chipper Scott Wilkerson. With all honors, privileges, and responsibilities there unto appropriate, it is his eighth day. Congratulations. So very proud of you. Thank you for what you do for Fort Mill. Thank you. My pleasure. Oh, our pleasure. Fair honor. Thank you. Really, thank you so much. Presentation number three, I have Fort Mill Rescue Squad. Who is here? Yay, good. Would you like to come to the front? Thank you.
Mayor Savage, members of council, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you guys this evening on behalf of the members and volunteers of Fort Mill Rescue Squad. The Rescue Squad's based at 216 South White Street, just right down the street from this building right here. We also have a second location of operation in conjunction with Flint Hill Fire Department on Pleasant Road on the north side of the, what used to be the Rescue Squad's district. We operate three advanced life support ambulances. We operate one first response unit. We have a fire rehabilitation and special operations trailer, four bicycles, and one emergency gator that we use for greenway and standby responses. Our staff is comprised of eight full or part-time paramedics, four full or part-time emergency medical technicians, and over 20 volunteer EMTs that serve the community with their time graciously. All of our leadership staff, myself, my assistant director, and the others that are responsible for the day-to-day operations of the organization are 100% volunteer. That makes sure that every donation that we receive and every dollar we take in goes directly into the operations of the Rescue Squad and goes right back onto the street in order to provide service. We are dispatched through the York County 911 Public Safety Communication System, and we are fully enabled for their GPS location. So for those of you that don't know, a few years ago, the entire county was divided into districts. The districts have gone away, and all the ambulances in the county have now been installed with GPS locators. So when you call 911, regardless of where you're at in the county, you will get the closest ambulance to the millisecond to your home. So if there's one ambulance that is three seconds closer than another one, that's the one that will be sent. That has really changed the dynamic of the way things have actually worked from 10 years ago, when you would call 911 and two trucks would show up at your house, if not three. Has made way better use of the assets that have been available to the town and the county. One of the things that I'm extremely proud of is that we have, right now, the only dedicated asset for fire rehabilitation in the county. It is a service that we make available to all the fire departments. So for those of you that are not aware, one of the NFPA standards for firemen is to make sure that they get routine vital sign monitoring, as well as hydration and care on structure fires and those fires that necessitate them to work a little bit harder than the routine. We actually have a dedicated trailer that we have built that carries water, gatorade, and all the necessities that are required in order to treat those, including things like misting fans, an 18-foot awning that's on the side of the trailer, and seating for over 40 firemen. So, the last time we used it, we put 28 firemen through rehab in about 18 minutes. And then of those, of those firemen, we returned all but two to service. So it's been a, when used, has been a very successful venture for us, and we're glad that we've been able to bring that primarily to the Rescue Squad's old district, as well as the county as a whole. One of the other things that I'm extremely proud of is we have a field education program. We actually have several contractual relationships with the local community colleges and other education institutions, where we bring in students and they actually do their field and education time with us, all the way from the first response level to the paramedic level. And just about 100% of them have found full-time employment after completing their field instruction with us. And that has also led to them passing their national exams in order to achieve their certifications, which we're extremely proud to be a part of. One of the things that has kind of happened here over the last few years, we're called the Rescue Squad. You know, so for 60 years, everybody's known us as Fort Mill Rescue Squad. And that implied a certain set of services that used to be provided. So when you were to, for example, be in a car accident, we had one of the main assets in the area that would bring extrication tools, specialized rescue equipment to those types of scenes, and they'd be used for service. The county as a whole has taken a different direction on those assets, has moved those services from agencies like ours to the fire departments, which makes it extremely redundant. And it became a financial drain to maintain two and three sets of equipment that would show up on the same call. One of the things we've done is reallocated those assets by selling them, and have since used it to purchase a new ambulance, as well as create the fire rehabilitation unit that we talked about previously. So, our call statistics, from a transport nature, in 2016, we transported 49 critically ill patients to the hospital, 983 non-emergent transports, and provided treatment or other services to 435 individuals. So 1,467 individuals took advantage of the services that we provide last year alone. Fort Mill, by ZIP code 29715, accounts for just under half of the services that we actually provide to residents. One of the things that we've seen with the GPS location is a shift in the fact that, for example, when we leave Piedmont, there's a call in Constitution Boulevard, instead of driving past it, we're now being sent to it. So you're actually seeing a distribution. Our furthest point that we've been to from Pleasant Road has been the Cherokee County line in Hickory Grove, where we successfully picked somebody up and took them to Piedmont Medical Center. It was an extremely long ride both ways. But it goes to show that the system's actually working. That's somebody who would not have had access directly to an EMS unit assigned to their call under the previous system. So we're excited in that, you know, it's kind of allowed us to get out of Fort Mill too a little bit, and make sure that not only do the residents of Fort Mill get an opportunity to use our services, but everybody enjoys the benefits of being able to have timely response to their residents. I highlighted this earlier, August 2017, we're going to take delivery of our first brand-new ambulance, I believe, in 10 years, which we're really excited about. It will be a 2017 medics unit out of Indianapolis. They will start replacing the fleet of freightliner ambulances that you'll see tooling around town every once in a while. And one of the other things that I'm extremely excited about is that we are opening our third station. And our third station will be located in Kingsley Park and is based in a partnership with LPL Financial. And what this allows us to do is this allows us to take assets that are currently downtown and move them to a more centralized location to balance the service delivery through the Fort Mill town. One of the things we have in our downtown locations, the fact that there are still two ambulances that are parked within two minutes of each other. This now removes that and starts spreading them out and starts equalizing response times across the township. We're very gracious to them for having us and look forward to fostering that partnership further with them as we move forward. One of the things that I've always strived for is volunteerism. It's one of the things, I think, that still sets the agency apart from others, both in the educational realm and the fact that we offer an opportunity for people to give back to the community. In 2016, the volunteers, those 20 to 30 people that I mentioned, donated 12,602 hours of service to the Town of Fort Mill, providing a $126,000 community benefit. So if we were to actually put a dollar amount on every hour that they served, they have saved the community $126,000. Our student and education program provided 237 hours of field supervision, and that's not, that is separate from our volunteers. So we have several volunteers that come, join the agency, are actually moving up through the ranks. We have two right now that are going to advanced school. We have two that are going to paramedic school. Those are not included in the field instruction hours. They would be included in the volunteer time. So that is people that we've brought in from the community programs who needed a place to actually do their work, and we provided that opportunity for them. One of the other things that we do are multiple community standbys. So agencies will call us and they'll say, you know, we're going to have a charity 5K. Can you send a paramedic or an ambulance to, you know, Elijah Park? And can you be with us for the morning to make sure our people are safe? Of the hours that we discussed, 622 standby hours of service were provided to those agencies with us donating over $14,000 of service, because we do not charge for that. One of the reasons we don't charge for that is, you know, I've been in nonprofit management for about five years, and I know what it takes to raise $1,000. And when you have somebody who's doing a community event, and they're selling tickets, and they're trying to raise money for their own nonprofit, I just don't feel it's right, nor do the members feel it's right, to ask them to actually take a portion of their profits to make sure their people are safe. So that is still a service that we provide free of charge to anybody who's not making a profit off their event. That also includes corporate standbys, where corporations within the township have called us and asked us to provide somebody for their corporate events to make sure their employees are safe and protected. So with that, I'll offer myself to any questions or comments you might have.
I think it would be interesting. First, Timothy, I've heard presentations for the 10 years I've been on council, and this is the best one yet.
Oh, well, thank you.
It was very well done, very informative. I think importantly, though, something that's missing is how are you funded? I know that you have fundraising, but do you receive monies from the county?
We, so, yeah, so I'd be more than happy to address that. Over half our funding right now comes from EMS billing revenue. One of the dynamics and the shifts that we've kind of had to adopt over the last 20 years is realizing that community support is dwindling, and these services can no longer be provided for free. The cost of equipment is skyrocketing. I'll give you an example. I have a piece of equipment on my unit right now that costs over $50 to use each time that we use it, but we might see an insurance reimbursement of $5 against that piece of equipment. So at some point in time, we had to decide to start billing. So we actually do bill our patients that we transport for that work. We still do not bill for what I call home health. So the residents that call us after their house because they feel like they have a blood pressure problem and would like their blood pressure checked, or they're just not feeling well and they'd like to talk to a healthcare professional, those are still services that we provide free of charge, so we do not, we do not charge.
What's your number? I'm kidding.
No, it's, it's 911. Tends to be, tends to be the preferred method to call the Rescue Squad.
You left it wide.
It's all right. We still have, we still have walk-up traffic at the station. You'd be surprised what pulls into the driveway. You know, so that is still a service that we do, we do provide free of charge. The other portion, the other probably 40%, comes from community donations. So we do two letter drives a year, where we target everyone in the 29715 and 29716 ZIP codes, and they receive a letter from the agency. It's usually where we announce, you know, what it is we're trying to do, what our capital objectives are for the next six months, and those will bring in roughly, probably $15,000 to $20,000 in donations, which is a marked step down from what it used to be 10 years ago. 10 years ago, that number would have been double, if not more, what we would get in the average fundraising drive. Last year, we were fortunate, we received an $80,000 federal grant from the Department of Homeland Security through the AFG process, the Assistance of Firefighters Grant, to actually outfit our units with state-of-the-art cardiac monitors. So you'll now find in all of our primary units that we now carry what are known as LifePak 15s, which are the industry standard for cardiac monitoring. But one of the things that came with that, which is an introduction of a service that does not exist, they are actually cellular-enabled. So when we end up three miles into the greenway with the cardiac patient on the bicycle, we can actually transmit to the cath lab from anywhere we have a cell signal. We're not actually tied to our vehicles anymore in order to do that. We've actually seen a marked improvement. We had a patient a few weeks ago, time to pick up to time to cath lab was less than 22 minutes. And that's a person who walked out of the hospital two days later and resumed normal life. And that, that's the power of transmission and telemedicine and things along that nature, so.
I think it's important to note for folks that this is the first time they're hearing the presentation, that in my lifetime, before, and I'm slightly older than what you mentioned, the age of the Rescue Squad, Robert Wolf used to pick up those in town that were sick in his hearse and take them to get the needed care. Then you guys came along, and at that point in time, we had a volunteer fire department fully, and you were the only game in town. Unfortunately, in the last few years, it's, as you say, it's been very difficult because we have competing forces with hospital services and other entities, and it's true. I've actually made a call years back where we had three ambulances show up at one call. I'm rather impressed that you guys have made it this far, that you've bought a new ambulance, and that you seem to have a firm grasp on what role and niche you fill.
Yeah, I'm, you know, I'm particularly pleased. The leadership change at the hospital, both at the CEO level and at the Director of EMS level, have brought new vision to the area. One of the things that you will see, we as a Rescue Squad actually participate in Piedmont's posting assignment system. So what that means is that means that as the county comes under pressure, there is a, what's known as a resource controller, which sits and dispatches, looking at the big map, and we'll now actually get a page that says, we need you to move from your station on Pleasant Road, and we need you to move to your post at Kingsley Park. Then we'll get a page after that that says, we now need you to move to Winthrop, and the system will start to collapse on itself as volumes increase, and it'll start to fan back out as it doesn't. That is something that would not have happened five years ago.
That's correct.
Five years ago, somebody would have had to recognize that there were no other ambulances available, and the only ambulance available was the Rescue Squad. So it has come, it has come a long way from what we were used to. And I credit largely that to the leadership and vision of the previous, previous CEO, I apologize, Bill Masterton, and Michael Wallace, who's the former Director of Piedmont. Both of them have brought a level of professionalism and openness, which has allowed us to develop that partnership and move forward.
Counsel?
You mentioned your donations mainly, you're seeking out people in the 29715 and 29716.
I think 29708.
Okay, that was going to be my question. If you're hitting Pleasant Road and Kingsley, you're obviously targeting people outside the town limits of Fort Mill.
That is correct, yes. So our target base is what we would consider to be the traditional Rescue Squad area. So the traditional Rescue Squad boundary was from exit 82 at Rock Hill to the state line in North Carolina, the Lancaster County line, to the Mecklenburg County line, east and west, and respectively, north and south. We primarily target that area. Our arrangement with Piedmont for our posting assignments requires us to be the last ambulance out of the area and the first ambulance returned. The goal being to keep the truck that the people are donating money for in the town where they're actually donating money to see it actually used. So we try to, to target that, that area, which would be the legacy Rescue Squad district. They're also the largest consumer of our ancillary services. The Flint Hill Fire Department, Fort Mill Fire Department have both taken advantage of the fire rehab unit. They, that was built primarily to service Tegacay, River View, Fort Mill, and Flint Hill as part of our base of operations being downtown, but we make it available to everybody in the county per request, so.
So that's not duplicating something each fire department already has?
Well, each fire department carries water. Let me rephrase that. Most of the fire departments that I've interacted with carry actually water on their trucks. This here, what we actually did is took one of our old ambulances, and we built a patient care compartment in the front of the trailer. The gator goes in the back of it, so we actually have a full ALS-equipped ambulance compartment in the front of the trailer. It has a tongue-mounted generator so that we can power it. And then inside of it, it has refrigerators to keep water cold 24 hours a day. We have frozen towels in the freezer, which the firemen tend to particularly like. I was surprised we gave it a try, and they absolutely loved it. So we actually have more of those now. And then we have, for the awning, we have a misting system, and then we have portable misting fans that can be moved around the fire ground. And those are unique assets to us.
Awesome. Questions?
I have a question. You talked about the nonprofits going to the community. Is that just in our area, or do you go into...
We generally, generally do not do nonprofit work outside of the Town of Fort Mill unless Piedmont has expressly declined. So for example, there's been some 5Ks in Rock Hill where Piedmont has apparently declined, and we've received a phone call asking us for our service. We generally will not turn them away. So we always kind of give right of first refusal to them, since that's primarily what would have been considered their coverage area. I think the only exception to that is, a few years ago, our volunteers struck up a fantastic relationship with the York County Special Olympics, and we are invited back to do their, do their standby every summer, and that's kind of one of our, our key volunteer standby activities, is to go out there and not only provide advanced life support care, should it be needed, which knock on wood it has not, but to also, we take the ambulance down there... down there and we offer tours and educational material and things along that nature. So that would probably be the only committed out-of-town standby that we do.
I'm sure that's something that, that they would enjoy.
Yes, they, it's particularly fun. Kids absolutely love the ambulance. Sometimes they get disappointed when they find out we're not firemen, but you, you take it where you can get it, right?
A little lean V there, Chipper.
Do you provide support for the school district at all? I know they're the one that has the most regular events happening.
Yeah, so our, our involvement in the school district's limited to varsity football. So the Friday night varsity football schedule, you generally see either the standby trailer or you'll see one of the ambulances actually posted at the game. That's by historic invitation from the school district and it's something that we just have done, if that makes sense. Other school district events, we, we will regularly be invited to Career Day. So in the elementary schools, especially the middle schools, we'll actually take a, and send an ambulance out with some of our medics and do Career Day with the kids and give them tours and, and share things with them along that, that nature. But generally, our involvement in the school district's been limited to varsity football.
And are you compensated for that if you don't?
We are not. We provide that to the school district.
I've been impressed with your service to our community and I want to give you my thanks for, for your efforts.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Hunt.
I'm just trying to figure out where your service line is then. So we have Flint Hill who has their service, we have Fort Mill that has their service, we have T G K that has their service.
There are no.
And you're the stopgap? I'm, I'm having a hard time understanding where you're exactly fitting into the program.
There are no lines.
So it's, it's an interesting, it's, it's a very interesting dynamic. In this area, per capital call volume, you have more ambulances that is either on par or more than the city of Rock Hill, which is a carryover from what I would consider to be the legacy system. So in downtown Fort Mill, you have an ambulance from Piedmont, in T G K City Hall, you have an ambulance from Piedmont, there's an ambulance from Piedmont on Highway twenty-one at the York Power Cooperative, which comprise the three primary units that sit in this area. And on a regular occasion, the ambulance that's at right across the bridge at the McDonald's when you're going up twenty-one will often cover the south end of the district. I don't ever refer to this as a, as a stopgap. Our call volume clearly shows that, that I don't think that we would be categorized as a stopgap, but we do operate in a fairly heavily populated system. That's one of the reasons, for example, we have our second ambulance coming online in mid-August and normally we'd be based out of the station down here, but on an average day, it makes no sense to have two ambulances a mile from each other. So that's one of the reasons that we approached LPL and started working on a partnership with them to take that asset and move it down in the middle, because right now there is zero EMS representation between Cherry Road and Gold Hill Road in the seventy-seven corridor. So this is going to fill a hole during prime time hours, seven AM to eight PM is the target. That'll solve a, a hole that's in the center there, which will cut response times, for example, to Baxter in half from what they are today. As well as, we'll also offer that same unit, when the downtown unit is out from Piedmont, we'll also offer access to this area to keep the response times normalized. So it's a little bit hard to imagine, but if you want to see it, we take ride-alongs all the time. So I would be more than happy to.
I mean, everything, all the areas that you listed off here, and one, the presentation you give, you gave should go on your website, your website's horrible, to try to divviate any kind of information off of it.
August.
But anyways.
We say the same thing.
No, it's okay. Seriously, like, August fifteenth.
Yeah, I'm looking at your website right now and it's a hot mess. Anyways, but all the areas that you're providing service to are Fort Mill. There are the county, there Baxter's not Fort Mill, that's in the county, up the other side of seventy-seven, that's county, that's not us.
So where we are, where we base our trucks should not be confused with where we provide service. So we are routinely on Hensley Road and Springfield Parkway on the lower end, the one sixty extension, Dobie's Bridge Road, even one eleven Academy Street, when we get down and we work with the, the police department. So just because our truck is parked in Kingsley or parked on Pleasant Road does not delineate where we actually provide service. Now, I will admit that the distribution is more skewed to the north by virtue of the fact where the truck is placed.
More people.
I'm sorry?
There's more people.
Well, it's not even that there's more people. The historic decision to move the truck there, so when you go back, when you go back five years, you had at one point in time, five ambulances from the hospital in Fort Mill and then you had us sitting downtown. We were completely surrounded. And a business decision was made that we needed to get out of the hole, so to speak. So that entered the cooperation and the partnership with Flint Hill Fire Department. You know, I think that when you look at it though, the majority of, for example, our community service events, the standbys that we do, so the money that we actually donate back to the other agencies that comes in through our donation stream, I think are almost all within the city limits, or the town limits of Fort Mill, Walter Elijah Park, the Greenway, the Strawberry Festival, major consumer of some of those hours that you see here, just to provide that type of service for the influx of people that we see. And we're not reimbursed at all for any of that time. So the Strawberry Festival Committee does not make a reimbursement back to us for that or anything else. We provide that to the city and the town and the county through our donation stream. So even though you might not pick up the phone and call nine one one and you might not see a Fort Mill rescue ambulance on one eleven Academy Street, does not mean that our presence is not very well-known and felt within the town limits.
Transportation, is it always to Piedmont?
No, roughly, right now, the dynamic, if you take a look at it, it's kind of on the upswing. Used to be more of a fifty-five, forty-five preference to Caroline's healthcare system. We're seeing now more of a normalized fifty-fifty split between Piedmont and I'll call it other agencies. So Presbyterian still tends to be the least, least preferred choice of the healthcare systems with CHS and Piedmont coming in about fifty-fifty, with the split being between Pineville generally and CMC Steel Creek on the other end of one sixty.
And how will your service from Kingsley change if the hospital ever comes next door?
I don't know. You know, one of the things that has, has come up when we talk about a hospital next door is the fact that we expect there to be an influx of units. Kingsley Park was chosen because it has easy access to the three major arteries of traffic through Fort Mill and it has access to those arteries with what we call limited penalties. So unlike a truck downtown that has to access one sixty has, I think, four traffic light penalties, we have one. So when you're calculating time to patients, those types of things actually matter. How the hospital will change that, I don't know. You know, there'll be more trucks in Fort Mill, but when a truck's sitting in Fort Mill, it means it's not sitting in Rock Hill. I would only assume that if the system continues the way it is, that truck would be moved out of that post to another post to normalize response times of available units across the board.
So when you say the truck is going to be in Kingsley, does that mean that you and your truck and whoever your partner is, you're all going to be sitting there from?
That is correct.
Nine to five?
That is correct. They have graciously offered us space within their health suite and full access to all their building amenities, including their cafeteria, lounge areas, coffee bar, et cetera.
I'm sure with that number of employees, that's a benefit.
Yeah, it is. You know, if you've ever worked in a system where you sit on a street corner, I did my, you know, I did my paramedic education up at Medic and two o'clock in the morning in a street corner in Charlotte gets awfully lonely and it gets awfully long when you're there for two or three hours. So to have a post to park the truck, to have someplace to plug it in, to have access to a game room, a cafeteria, a coffee bar, you know, those are all, all great amenities. I'm actually worried that I'm going to have to put a game room in the station as word catches out.
Can't you just give them one of these?
They're all going to fight for that.
Yeah, they, they are, there's, there's already.
Put their time in there.
There's already some willingness to move, so.
Okay. Any further questions?
One last one and then I'll quit. Kind of backing up what Shari said here is if there's a wreck on seventy-seven, who goes to that?
It's, it's always literally based by the second on the closest ambulance.
Isn't the fire truck always going?
The fire department will always go, the, the fire department's a separate dispatch service, if you want to think about it that way, from EMS. So when you, when you call nine one one and you request an ambulance, it will literally display, I believe it's the first three or five ambulances that are closest to your address and if the difference is literally a second. You know, one day, we were having breakfast with EMS seven down at the Peach Stand and we were parked on the left and they were parked on the right and we were one second closer to a call that was down the street, that gets offered to us. So it literally is down to the second, the closest unit that is sent to you. That's one of the reasons you see the distribution of our call volume, not only shifting in the town, but also shifting outside of what would have been our legacy district.
And it's becoming more clear to me that you transport from an event to a hospital. The fire department does not.
That is correct.
So even though you're both first responders and you're both capable of handling on-the-scene care, you do transport.
That is correct.
They do not.
Who trumps EMT?
Who trumps EMT?
If I'm hurt, which EMT's working on me? The fire department or you?
It, yeah, it's, it's generally both. There's, there's a well, there's a well-established.
I mean, I'll take all the love I can get.
No, it's okay. There's, when, when there are multiple people that require attention, there's a well-established triage system, which allows us to decide who's going to take care of who. That has become particularly helpful in our engagements with the first response service from the fire department. You know, I, I myself found it particularly helpful recently on a motor vehicle accident, twenty-one at the apartments, Lake, they're on the right on your way out.
Cascade?
Where we had four patients that were in a motor vehicle accident, one of them clearly needed my services as a paramedic and the other three did not. It was very nice to get in the back of the truck and close the doors and not worry about what was going on outside. So there is a very well-established triage system that comes into play there as to who, who will divvy up and take what.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We certainly appreciate all that, you and all of your volunteers do.
Excellent. Have a good evening. Appreciate your time.
All right. Presentation number four, Strawberry Festival Report with our very own Caroline Hasty.
Thank you, everyone.
Hello.
Hi, Caroline.
Mayor, Council. It's been an interesting twenty seventeen in the event world. It's had lots of weather. So my story to you all is the story of the Strawberry Festival twenty seventeen. This is my second Strawberry Festival. So my first one, I was taking it all in, you know, absorbing everything and it almost absorbed me this time. But with that being said, I'd like to go ahead and just go over, I'll brief, go over this quickly with you. This was the eighth year of the South Carolina Strawberry Festival. It experienced its first year with continuous rain beginning Wednesday. The beautiful golf tournament was fantastic. It was beautiful weather and then we had continuous rain from Wednesday on. So it started Wednesday of Strawberry Festival Week and ended on Saturday night and we had a beautiful Sunday. While most events took place, the annual pick and flick was canceled due to heavy rains and was the first event in the festival's history to have been canceled due to weather or anything. We've never canceled any of those events. Festival week began with the pageant, which was the week before, and with our new pageant director, Beth Vander Walker, coming on board in March, we had a lot of hoop jumping to get through and the pageant had increased attendance. She was very involved with schools and getting the groups involved, the dance groups to, you know, their queens, the school queens. The pageant made twenty-eight hundred dollars, they have their own account now, and has, and now their girls are now, will be going on to Miss USA pageants. So they are using their money that they raised for the pageant for these girls to go on to the state Miss USA state pageant, which is pretty good. After paying their fees to the state pageant, two hundred dollars will be remaining in their account. So for her coming in in March and, you know, having two months to jumpstart to get, really a month to get everything together, we're, we're happy about that. The golf tournament, Mike Zimke, fantastic guy, took this on for the second year, really brought the golf tournament out of the ground again. And thank you, Councilman Helms, he helped direct with Mike and Courage, he was a cheerleader, he even had pom-poms. We brought the teams from twenty teams in twenty sixteen to thirty teams in twenty seventeen. So they, the golf tournament made ten thousand two hundred with a thousand in mulligans and they have not offered mulligans in the past until this year. And I really don't know, I still don't know how to explain a mulligan, to be honest with you.
You got to sell them.
The pick and flick, we almost sold the car, we almost had the car and Mr. Peeper had that great idea, get a car, get a car. We did have a car out there and one person came close to getting the car. So we were pretty thrilled about that. The pick and flick was canceled and we were thrilled, the vendors that we were, that we worked with, they all, they just, you know, the, the movies, we had already paid for the movie, Shrek, it would be played, we were able to push that forward to our movie this summer, for the summer movies and that would be held Thursday night. So it did benefit, it did go into the festival events with the movies for the community. The final expenses were approximately a hundred and eighty-nine thousand, which was a little more than forty-one thousand under budget. We're okay with that. Total revenues were approximately a hundred and seventy-three thousand, which was less than thirty-seven thousand under budget. Therefore, the general fund had a net loss of approximately sixteen thousand. If it wasn't for good budgetary controls, our committee was awesome. They all worked together to get really good deals. Our town staff would put things out for bid. It just, we did a lot of in-kind. Instead of bringing money in, taking money out of general fund, we did a lot of in-kind work as well. You know, this number could have been as high as fifty-seven thousand dollars in the hole. So I was, we were okay. The primary reason for the loss can be directly attributed to the low attendance this year as a result of the weather. While the majority of the revenues and expenditures are fixed, some revenue sources vary based on attendance and sales, such as beer, soft drinks, rides. Because of the weather this year, our beer revenues were down sixty-six percent, our soft drink sales down fifty-four percent and our amusement rides were down thirty percent. If we had the same revenues for these three items as we had in twenty sixteen, beautiful weather, festival would have turned a profit to thirty to thirty-five thousand. While our revenues were off this year, the festival had a positive impact for nonprofit organizations. This year, the festival provided more than thirty thousand dollars to eighteen community and nonprofit organizations. The festival pays out to nonprofits, which also includes beer, drink, volunteers, we pay volunteers for their organization, seven dollars an hour per person for their organization. Parking lots, we've turned all parking lots over to nonprofits and some had direct contributions such as the car show, pancake breakfast. Fifty-six volunteers from nine community organizations provided a hundred and fifty-six hours directly supporting the festival, as inside the festival. Because we had low attendance, we didn't need as many volunteers and we realized that on the Wednesday before the festival and we did call off a lot of volunteers. The sponsors contributed eighty-six thousand five hundred in cash contributions and, and twenty-two thousand in in-kind contributions. Piedmont Medical Center is our head sponsor, Founders Federal Credit Union, followed by GT Tire, Experience Six, Bojangles, Comer, Comporium Family Trust and Rock Hill. Family Trust was new this year as a headline sponsor and we call our headline sponsors five thousand and up. The golf tournament contributed, like I said, eleven thousand. Vendors, this year, we had an increase in vendors and we noticed that some of the vendors wanted more space. So our revenues on vendors was up. We had a hundred and seventy vendors, which included seventy-six arts and crafts, sixty businesses and thirty-five food. We also had some miscellaneous golf cart, the butterfly exhibit. Last year, the butterfly exhibit was able to give us like nine hundred to a thousand dollars. This year, we didn't get quite as much, we got five hundred. So we had some challenges this year. We also have surveys, we surveyed a hundred and seventy-seven people and it's hard to get folks, volunteers to do surveys because it's easy for them to, to go to people they know versus people they do not know to ask, and where'd you come from, that kind of thing. We had, we had quite a bit from out of state, Florida, a lot in North Carolina, Ohio, several from Ohio, eighty-three, you know, we surveyed were from Fort Mill and, which was quite exciting to me because the weather was. several from Ohio, 83, um, you know, we surveyed were from Fort Mill and, which was quite exciting to me because the weather was really dreary and really sad. They didn't travel to come here. They could've stayed at home, but they didn't. They came and enjoyed the festival and they supported the festival. That was really intriguing to me. When you're looking over the stage at fireworks and you see community out there, these are people that I see at the summer concerts, our July 4th, that are there with their umbrellas and they're sticking it out because they love it. We had 37% were, I'm sorry, 62% that came this year to the festival were York County residents. So 66% word of mouth. Again, community, community, community is what ran this festival. I'm, I'm interested to see how 2018 will look when we have beautiful weather compared to this year and I'm pretty excited and a little nervous as well. So.
You already put that request in.
Her track record's not too good.
I'd like to compliment you Caroline because I think it goes unnoticed that we received less money this year from the county to begin with. So we were already working to find a way to make the strawberry festival fun, exciting, and we took a step this year towards making it even more local than it had been in the past.
That's correct.
And I think when you were out there and it was soupy and we had mud up to our ankles, but we were among the members of our community that did stick it out with their umbrellas. I think it showed us very clearly that local is what we're supposed to be about. And I think that even though we didn't get the money from the, the county and even though the weather didn't participate, I think we got a very clear signal that our community likes to get together and they like to do things with their community. So I don't believe in the future, certainly this council and administration and staff have something to say about it, but if I have anything to say about it, we're going to continue to be local and we're going to make it even more so. So that we, if we're going to have a festival and we're going to have fun, it needs to be with the folks that pay the bills in this town. So I thank everyone for their participation, for supporting that festival, for doing those things. And Caroline, you work, you work tirelessly. You were there every minute. This is a huge endeavor as a part of your event planning and I thank you because you, you didn't, you didn't get angry, ugly, none of that. You just did the work and kept smiling. Don't tell me, I don't want to know. But you did a great job and, and you kept everyone in positive spirits. So thank you so much for what you've done.
Well, thank you. The committee, I will say, um, coming here, coming to Fort Mill to do the strawberry festival was on, was in my bucket list. If, I could've done any festival, this is one of the ones I wanted to do. And having Councilman Helms, um, he was at all the meetings and, um, you know, that has huge support, but we had folks like, like him, community folks that wanted to be involved. Our food vendors, you know, coordinators, everybody on the committee, they had a reason for being there and it's to grow the festival and to be a part of the community. You're exactly right. And it was heartwarming. It was. So I, I thank you for the opportunity to host this event, to produce this event and I'm very appreciative of the community and the, the offices, you know, with my colleagues. You know, Shontae, she's constantly giving me the same numbers over and over and explaining. Joe's still trying to explain to me. So.
He just likes, he likes explaining. He's good at it.
True, that's true. But I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you so much.
Anything for Caroline, Council?
Fabulous job. I mean, it was good. It was really, compared to the last, I remember the one prior to that and it just seemed overwhelming with all the people. And then this year, we go there and it's like I'm seeing my neighbors. I hung out where the strawberry, they were actually selling the strawberries over at the little Peach Stand Park and people aren't just coming up and grabbing it and going. They're sitting there and, because I knew the girls behind the counter, so they're talking to them and saying, you know, getting, setting up playdates for kids and everything. So it was, it was nice to see the community gelling together and this year as opposed to the year before. I'm not, I'm not disappointed in those numbers at all. I mean, with the weather and the, I mean, I, I think you did a fabulous job.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Thank you Caroline.
I procrastinated.
You were worried and we were fine. Anything else for Caroline other than, uh?
Thank you.
Thank you Caroline. Alrighty, and last but certainly not least, presentation number five, financial statements for the month of June 2017. Shontae Bow.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
We come to you tonight to give you just a snapshot of the financials for the month of June as we printed as of July the 14th. We are nine months into the fiscal year, which brings our target to 75%. Our revenues are looking good in all of our funds and are either near or exceed the 75% threshold. And then on the other hand, our departmental spending for all our funds continue to be at or below. So that's a good balance there. So I wanted to just give you a little bit, since we are nine months into the year, I just wanted to give you just a little bit more information on where we are right now. Starting with our general fund, our property taxes, and this is through May collections because we get them a month behind from the county, they've exceeded the budget by $363,000. Our privileged licenses, also known as the business license, revenue has exceeded the budget by $145,000. And then we have our miscellaneous revenue, which has exceeded the budget by about $365,000. And in large part, we got a surprise this year. The state has a new law in place that started back in January of this year that charges a surcharge for equipment rental. And so we got a nice check from them to the tune of $340,000.
Ooh.
So we were, we were happy to get that.
Just to clarify that, if somebody's renting equipment, there's now a new tax on that?
A surcharge, a surcharge that the State Department of Revenue is collecting.
Thanks so much. And we'll see you in Fort Mill sometime.
Yeah, so that, that was a nice piece of change to, to see come in. And so just to let you two know that our general fund revenues have, have exceeded our expenditures by 4.7 million dollars thus far. For our gross revenue funds, our water tap revenue has exceeded budget by about $477,000 and our sewer taps have exceeded budget by $534,000. And that's in a direct relation to all of the building that's going on right now. And so our gross revenue revenues exceed our expenditures at this point by $3 million. In our stormwater fund, our fees collections, and again, this is through May because those fees are also collected by the county, we've exceeded budget by about $6,000. And our storm, stormwater fund revenues exceed our expenditures by $343,000 at this point. In our capital projects area, our hospitality tax revenue is at about 97%, which is exceeding our 75%. So we've got a big jump in our hospitality tax revenues and that's due in large part to new entities that have come online that are subject to the tax and growth in the sales of those existing entities that are subject.
How long will that take? So we just had the new, um, Holiday Inn Espresso, but you know, when will we start seeing that in our age tax? How long does it?
Well, once they get up and running, they are, they are to report to us on a monthly basis. And some of them are paying into the hospitality tax side and also the accommodations tax side.
Accommodations, yeah.
Yes.
Does it, does it report like the property taxes or a month? We get the numbers from the month prior or do we go in month to month with that?
The property taxes?
The hospitality taxes are reported.
No, that's, that's.
Prior month? Okay.
Yeah, they report what they collected that month.
Right. In arrears.
In the arrears.
Yes.
They report it and then they pay it?
Right. And, and I will tell you, some of the businesses that have come online up in the.
Kingsley? Kingsley?
Yes, Kingsley area.
Ale House, Panera.
They're really bringing in some big chunks of change, so I.
I couldn't even tell all the.
I just have to tell you.
Big trip, man.
Yes, absolutely.
We're grateful.
Absolutely. Yeah, so that's good to know, good to have going on. Then, um, our mausoleum sales are up for the first time by about $5,000 and the only thing I can say to that is that people are just dying to get there.
Don't say it, don't say it. Do not say it.
So things are going, things are going well for us right now as we enter the last quarter of the fiscal year. We didn't have any expenditure activity in our capital projects fund for this period. So concerning our other funds, our local accommodations tax, we've collected to date $275,000. And in our impact fee balances, uh, fire protection at this point is 433,000, municipal facilities, 636,000, minus what we spent already, which brings us down to 259,000. And then our recreation collections is at 1.6 million right now. And so our total collections to date is the 2.6 million minus the expenditure of 376,000, which brings us to 2.287. The other things that of note, budget is underway. Process is going well. Department head requests are in and we, and the meetings are, have started. And so we have the budget workshop for council slated for August the 19th unless it is otherwise decided, but that's what it is right now on the calendar, August the 19th. And the last thing that I wanted to share was that, um, the, give you a little bit of an update on our accounting software, RFP. That process is still going well. We have seen some demonstrations and now we're working through some reference checks. I can tell you, we've been quite impressed by what we've seen. The functionality is well beyond the scope of what we've been looking for and we've just got to figure out which route we want to go. And then we are hoping to be able to bring you a recommendation within the next month or so. We had hoped to be able to do that tonight, but we still have a little bit of research to do. So Mayor, that would be the end of my report.
I like it when it turns out that way. That's a good report. Questions for Shontae? Comments?
What is our time, once we collect the impact fees like for recreation? We have a shot clock, right?
It's on our CIP, it's four years, I guess. Three years from the.
The time, it's on the CIP.
Okay.
And I think the projects that we have opportunities for, um, we could collect as much as we could and make a dent in it, but, um, hopefully at our budget workshop, we'll be able to discuss what opportunities we want to take. So thank you for the fine job that you do.
And as on the sidewalk improvements, we have budgets of 100 grand every year with no expenditures yet to grow. Do we stand on that? That's always seems to be something where there's a lot of opportunity.
Right. We always hear, you mark the money in the budget. Really haven't had a project surface at this point. Um, I know we talked about with council, if the county and the school district, nobody ever parts together on that project on AO Jones, we'd use that as matching money. I know we were waiting to hear something like that, right?
It's gonna, it should be sometime soon because I was told, yeah. I was told that we couldn't make that happen the first part of the year, that it was going to be the first part of the third quarter.
If you don't have a project that's in mind, please let us know. I mean.
We've mentioned before, because I talked about main street area, particularly as you turn left by cutting room and going to subway, it's.
Scary.
Yeah, it, it's just not very smooth.
We can look at that.
There's a lot more pedestrians using it and I totally agree with you and when you're crossing over, it's already a blind hill. And when you see people wobbling on a bicycle or with a dog or something, that makes you a little bit nervous.
Unsure footing.
And, and also you can use it if you want to redo the brick, you know, paint the brick or something to make it stand out more on Main Street for the crossings. That might be something we need to do.
Some people, I don't think would use the crossings, even if it was painted in the bright yellow or.
Just like they do at Mont Burn List, you know?
We'll look at that area though.
We could, we could have a guide dog out there.
Is it on that side, Lisa?
Just up against the buildings.
Okay.
I, I don't know because I don't typically walk over the other side, but I know up against the building.
Okay. We'll look at that. I'll go, I'll go walk it.
And then it's also on Sprat Street. I know a bicycle that's failed the other day and got hurt.
Really? Okay.
Sidewalk is in heinous condition.
Thank God those potholes are gone now though.
Yeah. I'm grateful for that.
Thank you, Shontae.
Shontae, thank you so much. We appreciate it.
So why did you make the difference around the corner?
I have no idea. Old business item number one, second reading, an ordinance, an ordinance, excuse me, annexing York County tax map numbers, 736-0000-079, 129-132 and 311, containing approximately 8.20 plus or minus acres at 1122 through 1126, West Tinsley Road. This is Ward number three, Mr. Huntley, Joe Cronin, Planning Director. Do I have a motion?
Mayor, I have to recuse myself from this vote.
Alrighty. Do I have a motion?
I can make a motion to accept all business item number one.
I have, I have a motion and a second. Discussion, Joe, would you like to talk to us or is this just, anything has changed since the last time, the first reading?
Um, I think the only thing that's, I wouldn't really call it a change. I know the applicant was trying to work out some sewer access issues and I understand their engineer spoke with our engineer today, looking at an option for, say, a low.
Low pressure.
Low pressure system, which would not require any easement from any neighboring property owner. I believe Greg was okay. Not preferable, but it would be an allowed option to provide sewer service to the property. Uh, I believe that was the only outstanding issue. The zoning recommendation was R5 and that was with a recommendation for approval from both staff and the planning commission. And we do have a representative here on behalf of the applicant, if you have any questions for that.
I might comment, Mayor.
Yeah, R5 is not going to make.
You know, Mayor and Council, I'm going to just make a comment on that. On the low pressure systems, obviously the town will not maintain, own or operate pumps at a home or the service line going to the main. You know, there's, there's a few of those scattered around town, but it's not something we prefer because they can be a maintenance nightmare. And the homeowners need to clearly understand when they're buying a home, that they own that pump and the line coming to the main. Uh, and I think that that needs to be in their, their deed and their covenants and restrictions, wherever it needs to be plastered, that they, they own and operate.
I completely agree.
Those individual sewer systems.
I completely agree and I think that in, in our business, we're required to make known what we know.
Right.
And this is a public meeting and we're talking about this openly. So I think that information has to be in some formal way conveyed to anyone that purchases that property.
Absolutely.
So does everybody on council understand the issue?
Yeah.
And do you understand what we're doing?
So how do we communicate that to someone that's buying it? I mean.
We don't because it doesn't belong to us. It has to be a part of the contract for purchase.
Okay. And Joe, what did you say about R5?
The requested zoning was R5. That was recommended for approval by staff and the planning commission. If this project is entitled before, if a UDO gets it adopted, if this is entitled before the UDO, it would be entitled under the current R5 requirements. If it's done after the UDO, there is a recommendation that R5 be transitioned to R7. And if that was to take place, then the requirements, property would likely be rezoned from R5 to R7 because R5 would not exist anymore. And if it was entitled after that fact, then it would be subject to the new requirements of the R7 district.
And let's be clear, it's not a recommendation. This council has asked that R5 doesn't exist anymore. Let's be very clear. That has been a unified decision by this council. It is not a recommendation. Council, what say you? Do we have further questions? I, I have, I think I have a question. If, if what Dennis says is correct and this is built in the manner in which has been suggested, what happens when there is a problem?
They have to fix it.
Would you like to speak?
Would please?
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, please. And introduce yourself.
My name's Kent Olson, Development Solutions Group and we'd be the developer for the small project. That's a great question. And there'll be a third party firm that will be hired that specializes, in this case probably McCall, but a company that specializes in, in wells and monitoring and they are, they'll be on a contract, so for 24 hours. There'll be a, a phone number that can be called. If you're out of town, you own one of those homes, your neighbor says, hey, there's a situation over here, there's a phone number that they can be called, be alerted, anybody can call and be alerted to the company and let them know there's an issue out there. So it's not just an issue, yes, all the homeowners be made aware of it and it's not our first choice.
Of course not.
An event was just not being able, was not able to be attained by the. An event was just not being able, was not able to be attained by the neighboring community at Savannah next door. So this was Plan B. Uh, we think it's a good alternative. It's a very common system that's throughout York County, more prevalent closer to the lake. But a lot of communities use this. They're pretty common. You'll have a little monitoring well in front of each of the units that'll have a light on top of it. If there's an issue, the light goes off. McCall is alerted for some reason, nobody can get a hold of them. The neighbor can say, hey, and see there's an issue there, so.
And who will continue to pay McCall?
There'll be an HOA set up for the community. So there'll be the HOA documents, the CCRs, anybody that buys the home will be made aware of this. And, uh, so if I can answer any other questions about it, but we think it's a.
I know you can't ask any.
It's a good alternative.
Any other questions?
How are you gonna ensure?
Each home will have a pump, is that right?
Yeah, grinder.
Each home has a grinder pump.
How are you gonna ensure that the property owners, I mean, you know, as Mayor said, obviously it can be written into a purchasing agreement, but, you know, properties change hands and those agreements fall to the wayside over the years.
Yes, sir, agreed.
And, and what we don't want is somebody that pays, you know, a sewer bill to later assume the town owns and operates that system. And I've seen this happen. And, uh, I don't want to be dealing with those angry owners when their sewer backs up in their house and their grinder pumps out. Um, you know, there's gotta be, Barry, is there any mechanism you can think of that needs to be?
Disclaimer.
So that it carries with the property and the purchasers and subsequent buyers? Because that's what I want to avoid. Otherwise, I would not recommend.
The restricted zones.
Yeah, it's gonna be in the CCR.
Okay.
So any.
Cause it's not big enough for us. Normally, if we were to do this, it'd be in a development agreement and be spelled out.
Right.
But this is too small for a development agreement, so we need some other mechanism.
No offense, but there are very few closings that I've been to where the CNCRs were read verbatim or things were highlighted.
Right.
And as the age gets on the development, it certainly happens less and less.
Yeah.
Uh, even though we're required to obtain those and provide them, there's very little discussion. It's really kind of a buyer beware situation.
And once it transfers hands from the developer to, say, an HOA, later they try to change those covenants a lot of times too and, and.
It'd be pretty hard to change, but it, um, but the actual, on the actual grinder pump itself, first of all, you're gonna see it. It's very visible. They're not hidden in the house. They're all, they're, they're there in the yard. So they're, everybody knows that they have it and.
So how large, you said?
Usually they're about four feet in diameter. It'll have a red light on top of it.
I had to look it up too. I've never seen one.
Oh, okay.
Basically, Chris, what is this, own, own little pump station for each home?
You're right. That carries it to.
And a force main.
Exactly.
You're forcing it to the sewer main.
Right, right.
Are you aware of other developments of this size that have this situation?
Oh gosh, yeah, around Lake Wiley, I would say Patrick's Place. Bigger ones up, we're doing one right now, uh, a small project up in, about an island lake, Preservation Point, that's over 300 units. But a lot of smaller communities around, or in around Lake Wiley. Another one off the top of my head would be, you know, forgive me, I, I'm gonna get the name of it wrong. I don't want to misspeak, but I can tell you they're common around Lake Wiley in the smaller developments. As these, we have a lot of topography around the lake.
And this is sewer, right?
This is, this is a grip, the sewer, it's a grinder pump to get the sewer up to the main force main.
Right. So what happens when there's a leak?
You have sewer spewing out of the pipe.
Who's responsible?
Homeowner.
The only thing we would maintain is the main that they're pumping to.
I just want to make that clear publicly.
Mm-hmm. That's why I brought it up.
And that link publicly, that that would not be a responsibility of the town.
Yeah. I just, my concern is, is down the road, as subsequent buyers come on, I know covenants ju, kinda get, they're just kinda, here you go, you know, um.
It's made clear to them when they buy the home, that's your grinder pump. If there's an issue, that light goes off. We've got a company, a third party to hire, take care of it, and it's your responsibility. Yes, sir.
Well, and you also have the seller's exposure, and that's part of the process too. Which realtors are responsible for?
Well, we're responsible to, let's be clear. No, 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 this is, this is my bailiwick. We provide it, but we don't fill it out. And we're under no legal obligation to ensure that what's put there is accurate. It is per the seller's responsibility. So I'll defend my own here. I will.
Jimmy Cook's youngest son, I have no idea who probably are.
Um, I believe the motion is on the table with a second to approve second reading.
Last meeting, it was presented to us that the neighborhoods around were okay with this, the neighbors. You know, have we heard anything from the community as far as people not happy with it? You know, it was all roses and sunshine and rainbows.
Felt different last time.
Last time because of the eyesores that are currently there.
I don't think, Virginia, I don't think we had anybody speak at the public hearing in favor or against. We did the last time, it came up, basically identical zoning, similar request. And there were several neighboring property owners who did come and speak and support. Uh, we had also had a, um, meeting with, um, residents of Savannah Place, which backs up to it, and I think it's Heritage Court, which is in the county. Um, once we went through and kind of explained what was being proposed, kind of the pros and cons of the zoning district that was being requested and some of the other alternatives. At least from the ones that I spoke to, I can't say across the board, everybody was supportive of it. But from the ones who I spoke to, um, they, they thought it was a greater benefit to abate some of the issues on that current property, to allow it to be developed than to allow it to sit there in its current condition. But I, I would not say I will stand here and speak for the homeowners.
Is there any other properties in our town limits that has this?
There's some scattered around, not a lot.
Not a whole development.
Wholesale development?
Independent.
Just here and there?
Here and there.
I think Mason's Bend was probably the most recent. There's a few, a few small areas.
Where the lots were below grade, but, but that's written into their development agreement.
Okay. Once again, we have a motion to approve and a second. Do you have any further questions or comments? Hearing none? All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, nay?
Nay.
We have two nays, one abstaining, and four ayes. Four, two, and one.
Yeah, four, what, four?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right. New business item, new business item number one, first reading, the ordinance amending the zoning map of the town of Fort Mill so as to change the zoning designation for York County tax member, tax map number 0200504009, containing approximately .55 plus or minus acres located at 427 Banks Street from R15 residential to LC local commercial. This is Ward two, Mr. Helms. Joe Cronin, Planning Director, will be our source. And do I have a motion?
Make a motion to accept new business item number one.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Is that what you intended when you said accept? Okay. Approve and second. Um, I see that the staff recommends deny, and the planning commission recommendation was six, zero, deny with notes. Would you like to bring us all into the note section?
Uh, would be happy to. Thank you, Mayor. Um, this was one, uh, we were approached, um, by, um, Mr. William Epps from the American Legion, the Eli Bales Post number 43 on Banks Road. Couple of months ago, I believe he had spoken with, with Ms. Heemsaw about, um, wanting to do an addition of a covered porch, um, to the existing Legion facility at the corner of Banks and Academy Street. And because it would be an addition to an existing non-conforming building, meaning the property is zoned residential today. It's zoned residential today. The existing use, the, uh, we would classify it as a private cub, uh, club, lodge, or hall type facility is not allowed in that zoning district. So in order for them to be able to move forward with that addition, the property would have to be rezoned to a zoning designation where those types of uses, um, are permitted. Normally, somebody would come in, they would submit a annex or a rezoning request, and as long as they were touching something else around it that had that same zoning designation, um, most often those are gonna be approved. Uh, the issue with this particular circumstance is they were completely surrounded by residential and mixed-use zoning. So there are not any other commercial zone pieces of property. And I will say, this one was a very difficult one. Uh, of course, when you're dealing with the Legion, um, you know, staff would love to find a way, hey, how can we make this happen? Planning Commission, the reason why they recommended denial with notes was because they were supportive and wanted to find a way. The issue we ran into was our zoning ordinance says if a property is less than two acres, you cannot rezone it unless you're zoning it to the same zoning designation of a neighboring piece of property. And this one is a little over half an acre, and there are no other zone, uh, local commercial zone parcels of property. So when we reviewed it, Planning Commission reviewed it, um, while we would love to recommend in favor of approval, rezoning this property would conflict with our own zoning ordinance. So that was why the planning commission recommended, and the primary note was have council find a way for this to happen. So what we did in our staff write-up, if you had a chance to look at that, um, we did give you four, uh, options for your consideration. None of them are really ideal options because they're all, when you, when you do a zoning ordinance, you can't do, under state law and state case law, you can't do spot zoning. If you do a change, it has to be of general application. So anybody, any other property owner who would meet the same conditions could be given the same allowances that you would give in this particular circumstance. So the, the request that's before you was to rezone it from R15 residential to local commercial. That's what staff and Planning Commission recommended denial of. Not because we or the planning commission didn't support what they were trying to do, but because it would conflict with our own zoning ordinance. We looked at, um, what we found were four alternatives, if you wanted to consider those to, um, allow this project to move forward. Did you want me to run through those or did you all have a chance to look?
Yes, please.
Okay. The first one would be to amend the R15 zoning district to allow private clubs, lodges, and union halls to be permitted either as by right or conditional. In that situation, they would be no longer non-conforming with the zoning ordinance, so they would be conforming. They could expand as long as they met all other requirements of zoning ordinance. However, um, the Legion as it sits today is non-conforming with the setback requirements. So even if you allowed it to be a permitted use in R15, um, they wouldn't be able to do it because the building, I think its closest point is pretty much right on the property line. I won't say they couldn't do it, they couldn't do it in the location where they want to do it.
That was what, I was just gonna say, timeout. For my purposes, I'm, I'm pretty simplistic. They want to build porch so that they can further enjoy their facility that's been there my entire life and then some. Have we considered changing the location of the porch so that it works? Um, maybe going off the end towards the parking, going off the back of the building? Have we tried to help with some suggestions other than making changes to ordinances that aren't gonna work?
Well, right, right now, as long as the existing use is non-conforming, regardless of where they put it, it would be expanding a non-conforming use. So they can stay there as long as they want, they just couldn't expand the use that's there today.
I'll get to you in just a moment.
So, yeah, that was one that we looked at. Um, and, uh, you know, basically unless that use was allowed in that zoning district, they couldn't, regardless of where it was.
So what you're telling me is we have to do something as a council to accommodate within a zoning change or an amendment that would put them in a position that we could help them with a better location for the porch that they would like to build. Is that correct?
Uh, that's one way. I mean, there's different ways. I mean, there's ways you could accommodate them doing, where, doing it where they want to do it. I think there's ways of accommodating it in other locations on the property. And that's assuming you want to allow it to move forward. Of course, another option would be not rezone it, not do anything, and they couldn't expand it. Um, that was not what the planning commission recommended. They recommended that you look at other alternatives. Um, so allowing it as a permitted use in R5 would make the use conforming, meaning they could expand it, um, but they would have to meet all of the setbacks in the R15 district. So when we looked at it, um, there was property on the side, on the, uh, Bank Street side. It would require taking up part of the parking lot, but they could install a porch in that location and still be conforming with the zoning ordinance. The other thing to consider is if you amended R15 to allow them, any piece of property that zoned R15 could also have a private club, lodge, or union hall, including a piece of property sitting in the middle of a neighborhood, which may not be something that you would support. So I think you could do certain things, make it a conditional use and establish. Establish the conditions for how and where they could be allowed. Um, and it, it could be done, um, but it would require some changes to the ordinance.
So we change this ordinance now, how, if it's, if we pass the UDO, what happens? We change this now and then a month from now, we, we pass the UDO? What, what happens?
Depending if, if you are wanting to move forward with the UDO, our recommendation, last meeting we gave you 193 amendments. Our recommendation would be that we make that 194 and just put an amendment in the UDO. Um, we had, the question came up at the planning commission, what was their timeframe? Um, that's not something from what was explained at the meeting that they wanted to delay for a long time. But if it was something that could be accomplished, you know, maybe over a month or a couple of months, that, that that would work for them. Uh, so that would be one way, um, to do it.
What is the, what is the, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but what is the golf course zoned?
The golf course, I believe, is zoned R25 residential. Everything around it by and large is zoned residential with the exception of where the gym sits and where Tom Scott's gonna be doing the redevelopment.
Yeah, and we just did that as a mixed use.
Yeah, that's.
And R25 would not, if we rezoned those guys.
It's gonna be even more restricted.
Okay.
What about mixed use, mixed use for the market?
You would have to have a mixture of uses, yeah. So the second alternative that we identified, and this is something that we actually do have in the UDO, would be to amend our zoning ordinance, which right now says you cannot rezone parcels less than two acres. And one of the 193 amendments that we did submit said you can rezone property less than two acres as long as it's consistent with your comprehensive plan. So if our comprehensive plan said that area should be commercial, even though it's less than two acres, it could be rezoned. In that circumstance, the comprehensive plan says that area should be residential. So in that instance, you would have to go back and amend the comprehensive plan to change the future land use designation.
But then that opens us up to spot zoning.
Well, that, and I, I went back and I reread, there was a, a state Supreme Court case from 1991. It was called Knowles v. City of Aiken, which is kind of the, you know, the, the landmark spot zoning case in the state of South Carolina. And it says, as long as it's consistent with your comprehensive plan, it's not considered spot zoning. It's you implementing your comprehensive plan. But again, in this circumstance, what our plan says today is this is not commercial, it's residential. So if you would have to change the plan, then you could rezone it and it would be okay. It wouldn't be considered spot zoning.
I mean, if we were able to take in consideration to the age of the facility for the rezoning part, like if they hit certain criteria as if they've been active and open for X amount of years, they've maintained the property for X amount of years as that facility, is there a way that we can bypass the spot zoning by setting up like, I guess for lack of a better, a grandfather clause to say, you've hit these three points. There in turn, you are able to stay where you are, and we will try to zone you as best we can to fit in that existing area without disrupting what we're already trying to push forward in the future, but so allowing you to operate as.
Um, I think that's a better, if you use the first option and you allow them as a conditional use and one of the conditions maybe is it's something that's been in continuous operation for some period of time. Cause then you're not changing the zoning. That zoning designation would still be consistent with the comp plan. Um, I, I think that could better be accomplished through alternative one than two. Because two, you will be changing the zoning to something that's inconsistent with the comp plan. And I think the, the courts are pretty clear, that would be considered spot zoning, which is not legal unless you amend the comp plan. which is not legal unless you amend the comp plan. Item number, alternative number three would be our current ordinance says if it's two acres or more, you can rezone it. As we said before, this is only about a half-acre piece of property. Another alternative would be, there are a couple other pieces of property surrounding it. There's one that's owned by Gary Cato, it has a couple apartments on Bank Streets immediately adjacent. Apartments are allowed in local commercial zoning. And then there's also the parking lot, which I believe the Legion currently uses, which is owned by Springs. And I think that has a mixed-use zoning. It's either mixed-use or residential, but I think it's mixed-use. You could proactively rezone those other two parcels to local commercial, so those three parcels combined would be three, or two acres or more. But again, you still have the issue with the comprehensive plan, which says that those areas should remain residential. That's another alternative. The fourth one would be to amend the zoning ordinance to allow non-conforming uses to be expanded. Basically, anything in the town that's non-conforming could potentially be allowed to expand. That would basically undermine the entire purpose of your zoning ordinance.
Yeah, that sounds like a whole can of worms you don't want to...
It is an option, but that's one that I would strongly advise against. And I would say your fourth, or your fifth option, Barry, cover your ears.
Ooh, this is scary.
Just rezone it, hope nobody challenges it. Issue the permit, and then zone it back.
That's not happening.
Yeah.
It is an option, but it's not, I would not recommend it because if anybody did challenge it, they would most likely be found to be illegal.
Well, we have to remain ethical regardless. Legal first, ethical second are kind of the same. I'd like to hear from the gentleman from the Legion. Joe, thank you for covering those. Don't go, don't stray too far away. I'm sure we'll have additional questions. Would you like to come up and speak?
Mayor Hosee.
Mayor Savage.
Thank you.
And town councilman.
I know you.
I'm Wee Metz, I'm an officer of the American Legion, and post 43. And the reasons we're trying to get this deck built is to enhance our membership and improve our club in general. And what I was wanting to make a mention to is the offsets. There's some misconception on the offsets. When you look at the drawing, it looks as though that the deck would encompass the whole side of the building, and it doesn't. There's an offset in it, and you have to, you have to look at on the drawing, is this, that shows an offset? It doesn't seem to be being picked up by any people, but the actual deck would sit about 14 foot further than the wall of the American Legion.
Okay. And that's not very evident from the drawing.
Exactly.
It's not, it's not obvious.
Exactly.
Okay.
And other than that, I mean, if there's any questions, we can answer for you. Like, we're in planning to do a glass enclosure with, you can, inside you can see out, but outside you can't see in through tinted glass.
That's nice.
With push-outs to where we can open it for air and make faces at people when they drive by.
Like a three-season move?
I'm joining. I think it's important for us to hear what your intent is, and I think that's real important as we try to make decisions just on paper, it's really hard.
Right.
And this is an organization that absolutely has put their lives on the line for all of us, so we definitely want to try to do what we can. Have you considered other locations? Will the glass part keep noise from the residences that are gonna be close by? I mean, tell me a little bit about that, William, because I don't...
Well, I don't think that you're gonna get any more noise in the future than you have now. There's no plans to put speakers out there.
Why not?
Well, we're gonna have a television out there and everything, but there'll also be a door, we'll have a door going out to the deck. You have to use your membership card, go in the club, and then you can go out on the deck, and that deck will close. So we don't want to create a lot of noise, that's why we're not gonna put a speaker and jukebox and stuff out there. So I'd heard there had been some noise concerns, but we won't let that be an issue.
Counsel, do you have questions for William?
I'll just make a statement. I know, like you said, they have been here forever, and they have put their life on the line for all of us. I know that they do good as well in the community. They serve us always in the community, and we certainly appreciate that.
Always.
I've given it a lot of thought, and I've tried to come up with some idea as well, where we could actually put...
And I think you're gonna have to abstain from voting, because aren't you a member? I think you're gonna have to abstain. I do. My preference is that we don't vote on this tonight. I'll make a second motion, because I think I would like to walk out there and let you show, I'm certainly not an engineer, but I'll gather the people that are, and let's walk the path of what you intend or would like to build, and let's see if that offset gives us any leeway. Would that work for you? We're kind of having a weird meeting date this month, so we only have one meeting. So we'll have another one in two weeks.
Uh...
Three weeks.
Mrs. Mayor.
I feel it coming.
I guess we could go along with that, but we've been in the process of this for quite a long time, and really...
It's awful. I'm not gonna lie to you. The process is ridiculous.
To build a deck, and... The question is, is that okay with me? Well, if that's the only last resort, it would be okay with us, but if you feel there's a way to go, a path to go forward tonight through, I mean, I know Joe offered you like four different ways that you could rezone, or, I think that was, it was all about rezoning. And I don't guess there's any hardship that you could give to a particular club or anything? It's a nonprofit organization for the benefit of veterans in our community and youth activities, and you know what all the American Legion does.
I do.
But do you not have a way? It's a deck. I mean, is there no common sense left in this?
Unfortunately, though, it's zoning. I mean, it doesn't matter the organization.
Let me give you the perfect example. I see a gentleman, second row, that had a similar issue with his gas station that has been here as long as the Legion has. And to this day, I can't hardly look at him and feel good because we had to make a decision that was not in his favor. And if we were to make a decision tonight to do exactly any of those four things, we would have to go back and revisit Mr. Wallace Coleman's decision because we didn't do that for him. So what I'm asking is for a little extra time to determine how to make it possible without violating every decision to this point. Because I want to accommodate, I wanted to accommodate Wallace. He's been amazing to me and my family and to the town. I want that to happen, and that's just me. I'm only one vote up here, and I don't know how my colleagues are thinking or not. I just talk more than they do. Nothing has changed. But I do think it's worthy of, Joe came up with four, I happen to believe there's probably four more, if we really want to. And something he spoke a little bit earlier to say, you know, help the council find a way, what council has asked, let's find some mutual ground that works so that we could accommodate without violating previous or future decisions that would affect others.
I would be willing to grant that time, but there's four officers present, could I turn around and just let them show a hand?
Heck no! I'm gonna let them do hand signals at you back.
What do y'all think about extending it?
We can help some, Russ.
Exactly.
Oh, I don't like that.
I don't really like that. But...
I think that's better than us having to vote no.
The officer thinks it's a good idea.
I think it's...
We agree it's a good idea.
I...
We want to work it out, but we gotta have time to figure out what we...
We have to do it right.
Yeah.
I feel more comfortable with some more time.
Mr. F, I think in a nutshell, and I'm sure you understand this, the part that makes this very difficult for the council is it's a policy decision that doesn't just affect your property.
I understand that.
If they change zoning, it's everywhere.
I understand that.
That's why this is not simple.
I know, but it's just kind of hard that there's not exemptions or exceptions. That's just something that's a little hard for me to swallow, but I do understand.
And William, if...
It's to the letter of the...
If it were based on pure common sense, then we could do it.
Right.
But it's not. People will take us to court, and they will sue us for decisions made when they haven't proven that they are what you are. They, it's really hard. We can't, we can't, I can't look at you and go, I know they'll do a good job, I know they'll manage, we can't do that. So help us with a little extra time. Joe, come up with four new options, please.
Mrs. Hosee.
I have a question.
Yes?
I realize it's possible that an American Legion man may drink a beer, I understand that, but living, but having a lodge in a residential area that's nonprofit, I think is different from having a lodge that's Joe's beer stand.
Agreed.
Could we change the definition of what is residential? Could residential include nonprofits?
Well, again, the problem with that is when you change it...
Change it everywhere.
Somebody else can do it in a residential area.
Uh-huh. If they're nonprofit.
Nonprofits are pretty loose sometimes.
I mean, you gotta look at what happened on Confederate Street. That guy could possibly revitalize, I don't know. He could form a nonprofit and run a little retirement home right next to a residential area. I mean, I understand what you're saying, but if you change it for one area you're opening up...
I know the Legion's anxious to get this done, but I know you guys would want us to do it right.
It's about football season, right?
In all fairness, I think the council needs to take a deeper look at it.
I mean, we're in public, but do you really think anybody would have said anything if they just went ahead and built it?
Yeah.
I'm not gonna answer that question.
I'm seeing your ass for forgiveness. Don't say that.
I'm feeling a little sick right now.
I'd hate to have to...
So Mayor, was that a motion to table this?
Somebody needs to amend the motion.
I'm amending the motion to delay to our next council meeting. Defer, excuse me, defer to our next council meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor of the amended motion, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. Thank you.
You will.
Thank you. I'll be seeing you soon.
How do I get in touch for a meeting or with you?
I will have Joe, and we will get together, and we will do something within the next week.
Okay. I think, Joe, you already have my number.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you all. Could you note that Trudy had to abstain from that vote in the minutes, please?
Right.
Trudy, I'm sorry, I just...
No, no, I didn't.
Yeah, you can.
I didn't.
I'm protecting you.
Thank you, I appreciate you.
All right. Thank you all for productive reasoning. New business item number two, funding request from the Fort Mill Rescue Squad.
Before we go to the questions, isn't that covered in our budget?
It would be a part of our budget. I think if they're making a formal request and ask us for it to be on our agenda, we have to entertain the request.
It's not in this year's budget.
Well, this year, yeah, it's, it would have to be in the budget we're working on.
2016, 17, there's nothing budgeted. You know, it's up to you if you want to fund it in the new budget.
You get what we're saying. We're closing out the fiscal year.
I understand that, but we're just going into the new budget year that we're discussing.
Correct. So do I have a motion to, well, I don't know yet.
Six thousand dollars.
Six thousand? Okay. I'm gonna make a motion that we defer decision on this item until we've had our budget workshop, which seems to be more prudent, that we have an opportunity to talk about where that might fit and how we might or might not receive that accommodation. That's my motion on the table. So I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
And just for clarity, what is in our iPad says that like to request a continued donation in the amount of, that you're saying we didn't make a donation this past year, right?
I think Trudy was trying to...
Yeah, absolutely.
That's fine, if I can respectfully address. For about the last 15 years, probably going on 20, we've been built into the Fort Mill Town budget without making any requests to council. The process that we would use, if you actually go through your legacy budgets, you'll see that there's a line item donation for the rescue squad. The process that we reuse and has been handed down from the past three directors is that each November, we submit a formal letter to the city manager asking for a disbursement of those funds. The check is generally received in December, it is included in our December fundraising drive as a donation for the city, from the town.
When's the last time you received one of those checks?
It would be two years ago.
Two years ago.
So we haven't funded in the last two years.
Yeah. So last year, we were not aware that there was no longer a line item for that. So in November, our item was submitted, and I believe in March, we received a notification back that council had decided not to fund that. So I worded it as continued because I wasn't quite sure how the council is going to approach that. Are they going to approach that as we missed last year and we intended to continually fund? We're going to approach that as we expect the rescue squad to come back every year and do something that we haven't traditionally done.
You would have to...
Yeah, it would be year to year. And Mayor, council formally voted not to fund it last year.
Yes, we did.
So it was voted on.
Okay.
Also, this council cannot...
Make promises for future councils.
Make promises for another council.
No, and that's, and that's fine, and again, I kind of handed down...
Got it.
You know, the management structures that's handed down.
Got it.
I just wonder, really, is it necessary to be part of the budget? I mean, you're talking about $6,000.
Yes, it is.
Why?
Because it's not an administrative arm of this town.
Because we have to account for every dime. Those monies we spend is not part of the budget.
That's not, if it's an administrative part of the job that we do, that's different. If it's something that we initiate, that's different. If it's a donation to a nonprofit, they have to make that request annually, and I don't think it was $6,000 in the past, was it?
It was.
Was it?
Yeah, it was $6,000.
We actually have not come and approached council for any more money since the original allotment was done. And as a reminder, historically, that allotment's changed over time, too. At one time, it was the city fuel car that paid for all the diesel for the ambulances and trucks. That morphed into an actual cash donation.
I remember that.
You know, so...
I've been through 10 years of this.
Yeah, it's taken several different flavors over time.
It has.
And I think what was finally settled on, it was easier to have one amount.
Right, right. All right, the motion on the table is to defer this until we've had an opportunity to fully discuss at our workshop, our budget workshop, to see where that fits and our needs. I have a second for that. Do I have any further discussion?
And that date is August 19th?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Just for clarification.
I beg your pardon?
Just for, so they would...
Yes, August 19th, we will have a budget workshop. So we're in the thick of that, and either way, we have to discuss where that would fit within our projections for 2018. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. Thank you. I've got one nay and six ayes.
There were two.
Two? Okay. Excuse me, I have a five and two. Would you like to show a hands in the future?
Yeah.
Okay. We don't have a problem with that.
Mr. F, let Trudy go to the next.
We don't have a problem with that, because I think it's really hard to hear who says what. Okay? From now on, council, would you please be advised that when you make your aye or your nay, that you're to raise your hand? Thank you. Information discussion, item number one, unified development ordinance, UDO update, Joe Cronin, planning director. Joe?
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, just a quick follow-up from our last meeting where we gave you a, um, a brief list of one hundred and ninety-three amendments to the UDO. Um, we had asked council to review those and we gave you a worksheet. Looked something like this. And we said if there are any items on that list, if you have questions, comments, concerns, or you wanna otherwise discuss it, to put an X on it. And, um, we, um, we did get, hear back from majority of council. Um, for anybody who didn't, we will still have a little bit of extra time. Uh, if you have any additional comments that you wanted to, um, submit. Um, what we would like to do is not go through all one hundred and ninety-three tonight or during a regular council meeting. We would respectfully request that, um, council schedule a workshop solely for the purpose of going through uh, any amendments to the proposed Unified Development Ordinance as well as the accompanying zoning matter.
Please. Do we have a motion?
We really just need a date, Mayor. We need to agree on a date.
Well, just a date? Oh, sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
We don't need a motion.
No.
A motion, a date for approval of the UDO?
No, a date for the workshop.
Workshop, date.
Um. All right, so we're already looking at-
We pulled it back. How about July twenty-nine?
That's-
Twenty-eight?
Why don't we do it when we do our budget workshop?
No, it's too totally, you don't wanna go down that road.
And we'd be here twenty-four plus hours. I don't disagree with the thinking.
I have a, I have a family issue. I don't know. If we get scheduled, I don't know if I can be there or not.
Is a weekday or is a weekend better?
I mean, I don't know. I have a family member that's gonna have to go get cancer treatment in New York, so I have no idea. So y'all just pick a date.
Weekday would probably be better.
We can do two evenings if you prefer.
I mean, you probably need about four hours.
I think so.
Of August.
We could do two hours one evening and two hours the next.
I think if we're only discussing-
I'd rather us do four hours one day and get it over. Honestly.
It's not a dentist appointment.
I know, but I'm saying for, for everybody, that's one meeting instead of two for all of y'all, so whatever works.
Well, how long are you guessing for the budget? Four hours?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, probably.
How long are you guessing?
We've never gone shorter than four.
How much are you guessing for the unicorn here?
Four hours.
If we're, if we're only discussing on the, the page that was included in your packet, we had highlighted, thank you, um, the ones that one or more council member wanted to discuss. Um, if nobody had marked it, it's not highlighted. That may, doesn't mean we can't discuss it. Um, so we're looking out of one hundred and ninety-three, one hundred and forty-eight, nobody had marked, and we have about forty-five.
I want that unmarked most of them.
Okay, well, we can go through every one if you want.
But they're just questions for clarity. They're not, not necessarily-
Yeah, a lot of these are, aren't debatable. They're just like-
Explain it just a little bit better.
But it is, I, I agree with you, Joe. It is a volume of, rather than the intensity of the discussion. It's the volume of the discussion that will drive the time.
What about twenty-fourth? We usually be on the fourth Monday anyway.
Twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, twenty-seventh, any of those dates work?
Are we, we're in July now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, July.
July, we meet on the fourth Monday anyway.
July twenty-fourth, I'm good.
I'm good.
I'm out of town.
Twenty, yeah, you're going to the beach. Um, Trudy, are you available to twenty-fourth? Mm-hmm.
I just wanna talk about our five, so I can address all that before I go.
I hear you.
That's, um, I think we need more than five feet between our heads.
Talking with Diane, I believe we are gonna cancel the comp plan meeting for the twenty-seventh. So I know you all had that built into your schedule.
I can meet then.
If you wanted to meet the evening on the twenty-seventh.
July twenty-seventh?
Yes.
Yes, twenty-seventh work?
Say the evening.
Mm-hmm.
Instead of doing the comprehensive plan, doing the UDO, I can do that.
Larry? Lisa?
Stand a chance.
You don't stand a chance or you do stand a chance? Ronnie?
Are we talking fifty-fifty?
Chris?
I'm here. I'm getting back.
Trudy? All right.
I'm retarded.
The twenty-seventh, uh, Thursday, uh, twenty-seventh of July, six, five, what do you want?
Need to start early, cause you're gonna have four hours.
Four? As early as you can get here, Chris.
Five.
Five.
What time does you get to?
I mean, I can be here whenever I need to get here.
Can y'all do three or four o'clock?
He can't.
I can be here at four if I need to. I mean-
Jamie, you said five. Is that a?
I could, I could do four. I could do four.
Can I raise you two bits? Can you do four? Yes, sir.
I can do four.
Four. Twenty-seventh at four?
Four o'clock.
Going once, going twice, twenty-seventh?
Where we're gonna meet at? Can we use the new?
New conference room.
Yes.
I know, I like it. New conference room, Town Hall, twenty-seventh, four o'clock, full council.
If Virginia's gonna send us out a reminder, right?
We will send you a calendar invite.
So one, one last question in regards to that, just so we put it on the agenda as you want it to be on the agenda.
Mm-hmm.
Um, in your packet, one of the attachments we have, we do have the draft ordinance ready for both documents.
Mm-hmm.
Um, is it the will of council to have it on as first reading to vote on these amendments? And then allow us to go have the, between staff and the consultant, incorporate all the amendments that you want and then bring it back to you for second and final reading? Or do you wanna go through the amendments first and then formally vote at a later date?
That's what I like to do.
The second-
Amendments first.
The amendments and then formally vote.
Then do the two readings.
Yeah, but let's be diligent or this thing will drag on till, um, eight.
Do with it.
Do with it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
Okay.
Everybody in agreement?
Thank y'all.
Thank you. Okay.
That's a workshop.
Um, Trudy? The nineteenth.
Nineteenth.
And I'm going to. Trudy, uh, you have anything for the good of the whole?
Um, I was gonna let Dennis know that I appreciate him getting the forty-five limit. Uh, miles per hour, so I'm, uh, near the, um, Sprat Street going out of town. I just have a couple months on that. I know it was down for a couple of months anyway.
Yep.
Everybody stay hydrated and cool.
Absolutely.
In this hot weather.
Amen. All of our bodies. Chris?
That was SEC Media Days last week, so I'm kinda counting down till when football starts.
Yay, go football. Absolutely.
So, that's about all I've got.
Ronnie?
I wanna commend Ms. Caroline for her music in the park, even though the date she picked's not the best. It rained both times that I was there to support her. And, uh, the bands were good. Uh, crowds was not overwhelming, but, uh, everything's good.
The weather hasn't been Caroline's friend.
No.
It has not. Mr. Huntley?
Uh, we should keep our family, Virginia, birthdays in our mind.
Absolutely.
In our prayers. I heard a long time ago that you judge a tree by the fruit it bears. And, uh, Mr. Carter's, one of his fruits is sitting over there and judging by that, Mr. Carter was a mighty fine fellow.
What he does. Amen to that. Amen to that. Virginia, our hearts have all been with you. We are so blessed to have you.
Mm-hmm.
Very nice, Mr. Huntley. Well done. Jamie?
I just wanna thank staff for doing a great job, as usual. I was able to go to our family reunion this year. It was ours, it's been six years since I've gone. And, uh, I found that you have family that are your friends, but then you have friends who are your family. And I, I really think all y'all are, you're on my family side, is why I say thank you for everything you guys do.
That's awesome. Y'all gonna choke me up. I'm not gonna be able to end this. All right.
Here I am, gonna be the bad person.
Um, Lisa.
Sorry. Debbie Downer's. The cloud just pushed the rain cloud.
All right, go for it.
Now, the only thing, again, Dennis, I'd like to ask that if there's presentations, whether it's Caroline's Strawberry Festival or the Rescue Squad, that we see in advance. So that we can kinda prepare. Um, really, we shouldn't be getting, shouldn't have a presentation.
Yeah, if they have one, we do.
If they have one, and I think both did.
Well, Caroline didn't. And Rescue Squad. Caroline- Caroline did her some notes, but, um, Rescue Squad, uh, submitted their letter. That's all they've ever submitted in the past. I mean, they've never done a formal request like that before, we're sure.
We could ask.
We can ask.
We can ask.
That's right.
Thank you.
Yes.
Um, and then I noticed that you had left for us the overview of the expenditures for the new town hall and the budget for that. Um, did you wanna discuss any of this? It looks like-
No, I just really, you know, you asked for that and I wanted to make sure we provided it. Uh, again, I get positive feedback every day from some citizen or a business person. Uh, we are just elated, just like you got kudos tonight.
Oh, trust me, yeah. When we first talked for him, I knew it was a good deal to do. I, I'm just more concerned.
Tell him, man.
So on the budget where you had that it was three hundred and fifty-three, four thousand for the outfit of it.
Mm-hmm.
And then you end up with, um-
One ninety-seven, eight-eleven's what we spent. You got to one hundred and fifty-five, four eighty-eight. And we will use some of that for this outfit, obviously.
Okay. Uh, where's the biggest advantage coming from?
We just shopped.
Why were we so over budget? So I'm in sales.
Yeah, we shopped everything and, and our guys.
In sales, let me finish, timeout. Let me finish. In sales? Being above your forecast and being below your forecast, there's a threshold. Once you get to, it's called sandbagging.
No, we don't sandbag, Lisa. Again-
Well, where we, where did you win? Where did you have?
We won on every front because one, um, as you can see, it all started with day one and the negotiations of negotiating furniture, this, that, all the included items with the thing. So we spent very little money. We shopped, we bought used furniture. We installed the ceiling tile ourselves. We did so much of this work ourselves. It was all value engineered. It was all done in-house. Um, that's where your savings came from.
Okay, and, and I think it's important for our taxpayers to understand that.
Sure.
I don't-
Absolutely. Uh, we bid everything that we could bid that, that had to be farmed out and, um, just, we were blessed to have a, a great project that came in at a good price.
Okay, thank you. I think it's a good question and I think that it's information that the public is in need of knowing how judicious the decisions were made to buy used furniture, to make use of skill and expertise on staff when possible, which, uh, Virginia, great decorator sitting over there, you know, helped with the things that we didn't have to pay someone to. So I think it is important to talk about the economies that we are able to obtain and do what we can do. I think it's a good question and I think it's a valid and worthy answer. So I think it's important to tell the taxpayer what we're doing with their money.
Well, I think we certainly, uh-
It's very nice.
Uh, deserve to, to pat our folks on the shoulders for what they did. They worked hard on it.
Amazing. Our employees are wonderful.
And then on a positive note, um, as well, I'd like to commend Parks and Rec and the Police Department for, they're in their third week of police camp. And I know my child is, actually, both of my girls are participating in it, both as counselors and as participants. And thank you for pulling that together. It's one of the camps that I hear the most about. And a lot of the people that make some lifelong decisions, just the influences they have. So thank you both.
Um, I was able to ride with Dennis today to look at some of the work the town is doing over at Walter Elijah. And we are looking at expanding the parking opportunities there. It's gonna be very nice. I, I love that we're taking out some of the underbrush and making it look to where you can actually see where you're gonna park and see through the cars. So, uh, once again, the town staff is doing that and that enables us to save that money, um, which is a good thing, um, a very good thing. We're also looking at opportunities for parking and how to direct all of the new businesses that are coming to Main Street. Are wonderful investments being made by others and we're trying to be accommodating and make it easy for our residents to enjoy, uh, the new businesses. Uh, Chipper, you guys do a fabulous job as Detective Zachary. Um, our water and sewer people. I think it's easy to forget that at ninety-eight degrees, I try to hover near the coldest air conditioner I can find. And you guys are sometimes running up to a fire, uh, running to a car or putting your life on the line. I, I just, you guys are amazing, guys and ladies alike. It, it's just incredible, the work that is done and I thank you so much. I never forget it every day. I'm very, very thankful. And just as a newie, um, I'm gonna read out everybody's birthday in July. Tara Blanchard, Raymond Williams, Jonathan Kimbrel, our friend Ronnie Hales will be a hundred and two. Edonna Pace, Tony, Tony Wilkins, David Prescott, Howard Stapleton, Timothy Williams, and Ben Wright. Uh, these are wonderful town employees and I'll try to catch everybody in the month of their birth so we can celebrate that you're here and with us. And Ronnie has a birthday tomorrow. Expect cake. It's always good to share it.
Come on over to God's force, that's where I'll be.
With that, thank you all for your time. It was a lengthy meeting, but hopefully we plowed through a lot of the business that we need to do for the town. Thank you so much. Uh, Dennis, do you have something?
I just wanna say, um, we need to have a special mention for Walter Elijah also and his, what he had done for the town.